Okay, spring meeting order. Roll call please.
Alright, yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll be doing, I'll be doing the.
Oh, you're good, okay.
So, uh, Councilmember Tucker, here. Uh, Councilmember Eugenia.
Here.
Councilmember Veronica. Uh, Mayor Frank and Burnworth.
Here.
And Mayor Dave.
Here, uh, please stand for the pledge of agents. Let's drop out, two hundred. Mr. Mayor, is there any adjustments to the agenda?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor, there are not.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull item D one from the consent agenda.
Okay. D one. Turner, any action taken during closed session?
Yes, there are two items to report as listed on the agenda that council discussed conference with legal council as listed in A one. Um, direction was given to council and no reportable action. The council also discussed a public employee performance evaluation of the city manager and discussion with no reportable action. Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, we'll move on to C, public appearances, uh, C one matters not appearing on the agenda. If you wish to address this council concerning any item within the council's jurisdiction, please raise your hand and be, and be acknowledged by the mayor at that time. State your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves a right to place a time limit on each person's presentation, three minutes. It is requested that longer presentations be submitted to council writing. Would anybody like to speak at this time? Please come forward.
Good evening, my name is Jorge Chavez Junior and I am, uh, our N nursing student at Imperial Valley College. And I am a Viva volunteer and part of the Coalition for Tobacco Free Imperial County. November is the Long Cancer Awareness Month, a time to talk about a disease that is the leading cause of cancer deaths in the U.S. And the steps that we can to help prevent it. We want to do what we can to increase the quality of life and the life expectancy of our residents within our community, which is a quote of the Imperial leadership from like two thousand nineteen K Y M A news article about the poor great city of Imperial receives an annual state of tobacco control. Vive project along with Imperial Residence Coalition for a Tobacco Free Imperial County and volunteers have gotten seventy seven percent support to create a smoke free spaces. And we have numerous stories of individuals, um, youth and parents who get asthma attacks and are bothered by smoke and cannot enjoy our outdoor spaces. This is the fourth time we have come to he, we have come here to ask the council to take action. And we are now waiting for the council, uh, to act to protect residents from Imperial from secondhand smoke in outdoor public spaces and multi-unit housing. I asked the council once again to get smoke free outdoors and smoke free multi-unit housing as an agenda item to improve the health and life expectancy of our residents. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any else, anybody else would like to speak to say please step forward?
Hi, Charlene Baye, I live on Meadowbrook Drive. Um, I kinda wanted to touch base on the letter that we received, kind of upsetting letter that we received in the mail due to the com, not the complaint, but I wanna say the whole situation with our driveway. We did receive a letter in the mail stating that basically nothing would be done. That, um, it is what it is, that's what we, how we took it. Um, it's very upsetting because we did get kind of false hope and promises by the city stating that, you know, you guys were to work with us, find out, find a solution for us. And now we're basically stuck on square one, we're back to where we started. Um, on the letter, it does, um, the city, well, city manager does acknowledge that the city did approve those plans. You know, so the city did approve a fifteen foot driveway. And here we are as homeowners, we're the ones that have to deal with it. And before any comments come out that parking your garage, it's our prerogative what we do with our garage and no one can take that away from us. And it, as our property, we would like to park in our driveway without being cited, without being ticketed. I mean, wha- what else can we do? Is there another solution you guys can have for us? What can we do? Because it's a, it's stressful, it's stressful. And I'm pretty sure none of you guys have the stress of not being able to park in your own driveway. Not having to worry if the cop is gonna come around and ticket us or the code enforcement officer is gonna come around and give us a citation. It's not fair to us, it's not fair to us. And I read somewhere that there is a law that if we do not, we cannot park at our home, that we do have to have two assigned parkings. So is that another solution that we can be given to us or what is our next step? What would we have to do? Because at this point, I don't think any of us agree with the letter that we received and it's extremely unfair to us.
Okay, anyone else? Oh, Jack, he could, somebody had opened the door there. No, no need to leave so soon. Okay, anyone else at this time would like to come up and speak? If not, we're gonna move on to, uh, consent agenda. All items appearing under consent, consent agenda will be acted upon by the city council in one motion without discussion. Should any council member or other person request that I, item be considered separately, that item will be then taken up at that time and determined by the mayor. Um, pulling D one, do I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion, a second, uh, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Gonna move down to, uh, E one, Imperial Police Department, No Shave November.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, you have a, a procla, proclamation before you, uh, in recognition of the No Shave November Challenge. And I gather that, uh, the, uh, first female sergeant in the Imperial Police Department will be presenting this matter to you.
Hi, good evening.
Deanna Caldwell.
I'm Sergeant Caldwell, uh, for the month of November, the Imperial Police Department will be participating in No Shave November uh, to raise awareness for cancer. Male officers who wish to partici, participate are encouraged to grow out their facial hair, uh, for the month. Must make a donation of fifty dollars for a goatee, um, or seventy five dollars for a full beard. For female officers who also wish to participate, um, they can paint their nails a bright color and must donate fifty dollars for the cause. Uh, we wanna encourage our community to participate and help us raise funds um, for this cost by donating, um, they can come down to our station and we'll take the donations. All proceeds will be going to the Cancer Resource Center of the desert. Thank you.
Thank you, I'll be there tomorrow. Bring by a check. I've got a good start.
Yeah.
So. Uh, I might shave my head, but not my facial hair. Okay, um, move on.
I think before you, in the, in the red folder.
Yes.
Mayor is the proclamation.
This, no, this is not the proclamation, this is, uh, family court awareness. So that's on to, uh, E two. So I'm just gonna go ahead and read this off here, there's a lot of whereas is. Okay, Family Court Awareness Month, November twenty twenty two. Whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of family court system that prioritizes child safety and acts in the best interests of children. And whereas the mission at the F C A M C is fueled by the desire to create awareness and change the family court system for the cons, ser, pretty estimated conservatively estimated fifty eight thousand children a year ordered into unsupervised contact with abusive parents, while honoring the hundreds of children who have been reported as murdered during visitation with a dangerous parent. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on importance of impractically based education and training on domestic violence and chill, child abuse, including emotional, psychological, physical and sexual abuse, as well as childhood trauma, uh, perceived control and post separ, separation abuse for the judges and all professionals working on cases within the family court system. And whereas the mission of the F C A M C is to increase awareness on the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs, which services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, therapeutic value and whereas the mission at the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based peer review research, such research is critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interests of children. This research includes the adverse child experiences A C Es. Uh, study co-principal investigator Vincent Faletti Kaiser Permanente C D C, child custody evaluators, uh, beliefs about domestic abuse allegations, principal investigator Daniel Saunders, uh, University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and child custody outcomes in the cases involving parental alienation and abuse allegations. Principal investigator Joan S Meyer, G W Law School, uh, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. And now therefore, I, Mayor Jeff Dale hereby declare the month of November to be Family Court Awareness Month. I encourage all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor the value, the lives of children passed and adopted this day, second of November twenty twenty two by the Imperial City Council. That was a long one. Do I have a representative here tonight? No, okay. Alright, I'm going to move on to F, action items. Um, F one, uh, the Surface Transportation Block Grant, uh, program, Ayton Boulevard Rehabilitation Project.
Hi, good evening, um, Mr. Mayor and, uh, councilmembers, um. This agenda item is requesting approval of resolution twenty twenty two dash sixty nine. Uh, with the resolution, uh, city council authorized, uh, an application submission to obtain funding from the Surface Transportation Block Grant or S T B G, uh, for the restoration of Ayton Boulevard uh, between the old, um, Stair Road eighty six up to the western side of the railway of the Southern Pacific Railroad. Um, the, um, actual resolution is attachment one of this agenda item. Uh, the, um, the city has secured, uh, five hundred and thirty thousand dollars from S T B G program. But the resolution, it's an, uh, it's an application requirement to actually receive those funding. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Questions or comments?
A quick question, do you know what, how, what the distance is that we're doing from the railroad to eighty six?
Um, no, I don't have that data right here, but it's roughly, uh, two thousand feet.
So less than, less than half a mi, about, less than half a mile?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And this is a, a continuation, uh, from the segment to the west.
And that'll be, uh, both east and westbound?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, the, the project includes not only the restoration of the surface, we are going to grind and overlay, uh, but all the new, uh, striping and bike lanes at both sides, north and south.
We know what kind of striping we're using?
Uh, thermoplastic.
Okay, so, know where I'm going with this. Um, are we still on track to do from Austin to, um, eighty six?
Yeah, correct, this is, uh, the third approval. We previously got approval, uh, uh, through C M A for the class two bike lanes and then S T B G, uh, Ayton Boulevard, uh, at below it up to Highway eighty six. So this one is a third one and we would be able to secure roughly two million dollars and two million one hundred thousand dollars.
So this'll, with finishing up this one, we'll be done with all of Ayton Road?
Uh, no, we still have a portion between the railroad tracks, the inside of the railroad tracks up to Cross, which is the, the, the portion that has, I mean, slightly better condition. Uh, but we're, I mean, based on the, um, performance and delivery project, we have a good chance to eventually get additional funding in for fiscal year, I would say twenty six, twenty seven.
And how does it look where the Union Pacific with the railroad crossing?
Uh, we are not touching within the, uh, the railway.
Correct.
So ba, bas, basically, we don't have any, any problem with it.
The cross is still good?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you. No more questions, then make a motion.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have motion and second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Move on to F two, resolution of the city council regarding unaccal, unallocated account.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, city's independent auditors has recommended adoption of this resolution. Uh, the idea being that in, in doing so, will essentially set aside the, the amount that's been allocated to this fund uh, and allow completion of the audit going, uh, uh, for the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty twenty one and going forward.
Questions or comments?
Um, so just, I have a few questions. So on here, it talks about zeroing out the funds or zeroing out the unal, unallocated funds. So are this essentially gonna make it a negative balance in it or zeroing it out, just gonna kind of set it aside? Can you explain a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, in essence, if by, by setting it aside, will, will reconc, allow the account to be reconciled? Uh, and so, and so, uh, uh, it, it basically addresses the fact that we have this, the sum of money in this unallocated fund, it basically balances the checkbook, if you will, by setting it aside. And so it, it, it essentially does, like you say, zero it out. And so the, 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 um, uh, uh, amount of money that is reflected in our accounting records will line up with the amount of money that's reflected in our bank statement. And by zeroing out this account, those two will be balanced, uh, and will allow the audit to be completed. Now, a, a, as part of that though, the audit report, we, we expect that the audit report will have a disclaimer in it. Uh, uh, but, but we expect that we're gonna get to the bottom of that fund at, at which time there'll be an explanation, uh, for, for that sum. But in, in terms of allowing us to complete the audit, essentially zeroing out will allow us to do that.
So it's not necessarily forgiving the balance?
No.
Okay, um. Good, so, cause this is something that I, like, I've lost sleep over, you know, kinda makes me sick to my stomach. Um, but I just wanna can, ask if you can continue to put this item on the agenda so we can get an update and be as transparent with the public as possible?
Sure. Cause if you, if you note, as part of what the resolution says is, is that you're, you're directing staff to get to the bottom of that. And so, uh, part of, the next item on your agenda is, is part of the vehicle by which we intend to do.
Questions or comment? Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
To F three, agreement between the city of Imperial and Unitemp's Municipal Staffing Solutions.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, this agenda item essentially is a second, second piece to what you just did with in, under, uh, F two in the resolution. A, as, as, as we discussed, uh, part of what your direction is in, in the resolution is to get to the bottom of this unallocated fund and also, uh, complete our audits and, and, uh, get scored away on how we deal with the reconciliation of our bank accounts going forward. Uh, part of the way we intend to do that is by contracting with, um, Unitemp's. Uh, they, they offer various sorts of su, services. One of the things they do is in the financial area. And so as you can see, this, this authorizes contracting with them. Oh, it's currently set up for a six month period. And as the agenda item indicates, if it goes that entire six months, uh, it, it would be an amount not to exceed a hundred ninety one thousand dollars. Um, the contract provides for termination on seven days notice, so in the event we achieve of the goals of what your resolution that you just adopted says earlier, then the agreement will be, uh, will be terminated. Part of the goal of this is to, uh, in es, unless, in essence, also provide the vehicle by which we'll staff up the, our finance department, uh, on a going forward basis.
Questions or comments?
Make the motion to approve, uh, agreement between the city of Imperial and Unitemp's, uh, municipal staffing solutions for the term of six months not to exceed a hundred and ninety one thousand dollars.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Move on to F four, continue emergency dec, uh, declaration of by resolution two, twenty twenty two dash oh six for suction lines at various lift stations.
During council, this is established by resolution twenty twenty two dash zero six for the repair of the, uh, suction lines at, uh, four different lift stations. And we're just simply waiting on parts and pieces.
I'm gonna, before we make a motion, I wanna, um, correct an error on the agenda item. It says resolution number is twenty twenty two dash sixty and it should be zero six. No worries.
Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second? Okay, we have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay, um, the meeting of the city council is adjourned till the next, whoops.
Did we pull, d- do we have to go back to the poll item?
Yeah, item D one.
D one.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
So for item D one, um, I had pulled it because I had requested backup information for it?
Yes, I, I understood, uh, Councilperson Burnworth, you wanted to see purchase orders or invoices and, and in between the time of your request and now we weren't able to pull those? And so, uh, uh, we, we can certainly provide those because each, e- each of these items, before it makes its way to this list, there's a purchase order prepared by the department and signed off by Department of Finance and me to authorize, authorize the payment. And so there's a purchase order, then, a- and, uh, and that purchase order is backed up by, by invoices. And so certainly we can provide that, uh, to you on however, whatever basis you want. If you want to see him for, for every, uh, meeting, we can certainly do that in advance, uh, of the meeting, if we know, if we know you want that. We did, we weren't able to pull those together in be- in between the time of your request and now.
Yeah, also, um, I didn't think you would have the time, so, so I apologize for my late requests. But I do would like to see like where budget-wise these funds are coming out of. 'Cause this kinda doesn't really give you any information about, it just says a check has been paid to a certain vendor.
One of the items that you'll see when you look at the purchase orders, there's a designation on the purchase order about which account, uh, which fund the money is coming from. Uh, in the purchase order, for example, if it's a, if, if it's a payment on a contract, will often have that contract attached. Or if it's a case where the council took an action to authorize a payment, that purchase order will have the staff report and the ca- and the, uh, council approval.
Okay. Turn until November sixteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, wait.
We, we can't run some of these checks, so we, I think we, we need you to consider approving it or?
Yeah, we do, what, what was your intent with? You wanna hold up on approval of this and?
Yeah, I mean, is it gonna hold up your payments or are these checks already been sent out?
Yeah, the, the, I, that's the other aspect of this, this is these, this is after the fact.
Okay.
Uh, so that the, the checks have gone out. Um, my suggestion would be that going, we do this going forward.
Yeah.
Unless, and if there's a particular one that you wanna look at, then certainly I would, we might hold, hold that one out and approve the rest.
Right.
If there's a particular, uh, payment that you
if.
are concerned about.
I can just get the, um, the backup information for this and then where the budget item, so like they're categorized and then do that moving forward.
Right.
But I'll make a motion to approve this one.
Okay.
Please vote.
Motion passes five zero.
Meeting's adjourned till the sixteenth.